Please rise and join me in the store flag. Okay. If you remain standing, please. As you know, I'm sure this past week, this past weekend, two young girls that graduated Norwalk High School in two thousand and nineteen were involved in a head-on collision in West Haven in nine ninety-five. And they succumbed to their injuries. Also, we lost a local sports hero Bobby Miller, who is brother, stepbrother of Calvin Murphy, who passed away this weekend as well. So I'd like to just have a moment of silence in memory of all those people. Thank you. If you please recall the roles.
Mr. Burnett. Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Najelski Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yeah.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. McMur.
Present.
Ms. Murray.
Yeah.
Ms. Dunn.
Yeah.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Yeah.
Ms. Shanahan.
Yeah.
Fifteen, we have a forum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMur, any corrections, deletions, or omissions? I don't have to check the screen this time. Seeing that's special meeting. I'm sorry.
Next. Next.
Okay. So, all in favor of acceptance of the minutes as submitted? Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Dunn is abstaining. I'm sorry. Ms. Murray is abstaining. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Young. Any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Mr. Sutton.
Let's finish with like that. I was present at this meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
The correction is that Mr. Sutton was in attendance. Any further corrections, or deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Murray. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. If you wish to address the council, if you'll come to the podium, if you have signed the paper and speak on any item that's on the agenda, and we have a limit of three minutes.
Ms. Lisa Britton.
Everybody looks so nice this evening. It must be picture day. Like school picture day. Lisa Britton, nineteen sharp apart. I submitted my budget recommendations this morning before noon for you to review and inclusion in the meeting minutes. So I'm not going to belabor those points tonight. You can all read them. What I wanted to add, moving anecdotally, is I moved to Rowayton in nineteen ninety-eight, and at that time, my taxes were sixty-six hundred dollars. In two thousand and twenty, when I moved, they were twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, nobody in this room or in Norwalk is going to cry and go boo hoo, Lisa Britton had to move out of Rowayton. But the point I want to make is I didn't sell my house for three and a half times what my tax bill was. Sadly, this tax hike isn't a surprise to me. It's why I sold and downsized when I did. But I want to say how many other Norwalkers, second or third generation, will have the privilege that I did to be able to downsize and still stay in this city? When you factor in the years of rising high need students in poverty, the exclusionary zoning in our neighboring towns, and the state-driven density with our abatements and our REITs, you know, to REITs and developers, as well as the ECS funding that we've been short-changed on for two decades, the math doesn't work for residents. It just doesn't. I don't know whether, I had heard that maybe you guys were not going to vote on the budget cap tonight, or I know you're still scrubbing the budget as much as you can. Hopefully, you're looking to still cut, consolidate, and look for new revenue sources, because this great city, this isn't just a one-year problem. This is our new reality. I just came from the Board of Ed. They're adding legal counsel, their own in-house legal counsel. Thought we were supposed to be consolidating. So that's hot off the press from about twenty minutes ago. Chipping gears, just quickly, I just wanted to comment on the redistricting committee vote tonight and reiterate the ordinance that you vote on for this selection process is an outlier compared to the rest of the state. I'm not going to bore you with my comments, because I already provided those for the record. But if you vote yes, you are codifying what I consider, and many consider, a non-democratic and exclusionary selection process, ignoring independence on affiliate Republicans, effectively saying it's our way, or it's who we want, or the highway. Therefore, the independent party has no other option but to file a complaint with the state. They probably won't care either. But without healthy and genuine opposition, concentrated power, bullying, and cronyism grows within a party. And you guys may think, oh, Lisa, blah, 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 blah. But your peers in other cities have had enough. Democrats in Bridgeport, led by John Gomes, have access to the independent lineup, challenged the absentee ballot fraud, and the incumbent Joe Gannon. Stanford Democrats for Reform are done with the party bullying and Hartford's dense the agenda in their city, and they are rebelling. They have a town committee election March fifth. So I'm just hoping that one day, in conclusion, that some of you will have the courage to vote your conscience and stand up to the status quo like your peers have done in other Democrat cities, because the rest of us don't have a chance. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Britton.
Ms. Diane Lauricella, please state your name and address.
Is she?
Yes. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Hey, thank you. For the record, my name is Diane Lauricella. I live at twenty-one Little Fox Lane. This evening, I wanted to comment on a few items in my three minutes. I'll start with the one that I know is of great importance to all of you, and that is the budget cap. I am not aware whether you will or you won't vote on it tonight, but I wanted once again to suggest that you need to go back and scrub some more, because there are still more savings that can be achieved. One thing that I noticed in the public meetings, where there were public hearings without the benefit of until Friday, was there was no discussion for you all about new revenue sources. And one of the things that I've talked about for several years is the need for a full-time grant person, because many of the people on the staff that have become almost, have worked on grants, and of course, you want a wordsmith according to the department's verbiage. We hired them to do other roles, and in other cities of our size, a full-time grant person is the one that would follow up with the grantor and write those reports, and it can be very tedious. We want our staff that was hired as engineers, for instance, to do that work, not grant writing. So I'm still disappointed that this still hasn't risen to your interest. Number two, under C, ordinance. Under, the first one, under city property sales, fifty thousand dollars is far too high to avoid public scrutiny. I think it should be lowered to ten thousand, although that property in Rowayton was a giveaway at one thousand dollars. I also think under the number two, the blight prevention, we have to really take a look at the zoning citation process. It's time for reform, because it is just not working out, as many of the hearing items last for a year, over a year, and much to the chagrin of the neighbors that are, want to see justice. Lastly, I wanted to state that under your Board of Estimate appointment for tonight, while I am not in any way commenting on the quality of the person that I read that you are planning to appoint, I am on the record for several years to say that since women in Norwalk make up over fifty percent of the population, we, I believe we can do better, and I would like Mr. Camacho to step back and the city look harder and actually put in an article or advertisement for qual, for women that are interested in financial future of our city. I believe that we really need to have parity on this board. I do know, and I'm sure this will be said after.
Three minutes. Yeah, three minutes, yeah.
I will wrap up, is that we have in Norwalk hired lots of women who are helping run our city, and that is wonderful, and I have complimented the mayor and the council. But on boards and commissions, we should strive for fifty percent minimum, and we need an additional female to fill this role, and I'm very sad, because I brought it up as the permanent commission on the status of women, and with the DEI coordinator, who for reasons that I'm still waiting to hear.
Three minutes and thirty seconds.
Thank you very much, and please reconsider this appointment position. It's very important for our city. Thank you.
If there is anybody else who wishes to speak online, joining us by Zoom, please raise your hand electronically. Please raise your hand electronically if you would like to speak.
So anybody else in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close public participation. Next item on the agenda is resignations and appointments. We only have one. We have an appointment of Mr. Edwin Camacho to the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Do I have a motion? Mr. Frayer?
I'd like to say something. I'm very privileged to nominate Ed Camacho to the BET. This is kind of a homecoming for Ed. He served on the BET from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-three, when he joined the Common Council. Interestingly enough, I seem to be following him around since I was on the BET, worked with him very closely, and then wound up sitting next to him here on this desk. Ed's a graduate of Amherst College, where he got his bachelor's and went on to law school at Indiana University. He's admitted to the bar in New York, Connecticut, the District, U.S. District Court in Connecticut and New York, and the U.S. Court of Appeals. He has a wide breadth of knowledge of the city, having served as the chairman of Democratic Town Committee from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty. He's a member of the Norwalk Housing Commission. He's a member and actually chairman of the South Norwalk Community Center, so he knows the area, he knows the people. I particularly, during this, I think particularly during this budget season, Ed is going to be an invaluable asset to the BET Board of Estimate and Taxation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frayer. Any further comments? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to support the appointment of Edward Camacho to the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Mr. Camacho and I also served on the BET. Actually, he succeeded me as the chairman of the BET. And I've always found him to apply the most important principle that I think each member of the BET should always aspire to, which is utilizing basic common sense when it comes to determining the appropriation of funds across the various departments of the city. And I've always found that to be a very refreshing and a very important trait of Mr. Camacho, and I'm sure his return to the BET will be an extreme asset to the BET, especially during the upcoming budget discussions, which will be very difficult. So his resources will be appreciated.
Thank you. Further comment, Mr. Goldstein?
All I want to add is, and I think Councilman Burnett, I think, foregrounded this, which is we need the best people we can get and the best assets we can get to help us through a really difficult set of discussions and policy decisions when it comes to our budget. Ed Camacho is about as qualified as it gets, having not only been on the BET, served on the Common Council. I mean, he's someone who is deeply with a political mind. Most of us have gotten the privilege to work with Ed, and I can't think of a better person to make his return to the Board of Estimate Taxation that Ed, I will be enthusiastically supporting this.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I would also like to add my support for Ed's return to the BET. I think that the timing couldn't be better. This is an extremely difficult budget season, as we are all painfully aware. And so his experience and vision for the city of Norwalk will be invaluable at this time. He knows when to draw the line, but he also knows when we need to push for what the city needs. So I fully support his return to the BET.
Ms. Najelski Eichner?
Just to briefly join my colleagues, I was teasing Ed not long ago about the fact that he was not serving the city for the first time in, oh, I don't know, a decade, two decades, and of course, immediately thereafter, found out that, of course, he's coming back to serve. So I really appreciate your dedication to the city, your willingness to step up. We have benefited enormously, and I appreciate that commitment to service.
Further comments or discussion? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've known Ed for quite some time as a resident in your business in District B, and your time on the DTC. But what I have to really speak about is I really got to see a different side of you when we were on the council. And the questions that you asked were very thoughtful and insightful. And as Ms. Noran, Najelski Eichner mentioned, you're thoughtful and thoughtful about what you're doing, and you care about the city, and I so appreciate that. I did see a different side, another side, a good side. And so I'm happy to hear that you're going back on to the BET. And I have to really just say, address Diane Lauricella's comments about women being appointed. And I think that that is something that we focus on, and we want to get to that. But you clearly need to be in that position, and I know that there will come another time when we can appoint a woman, a qualified person, woman to that position. But in the meantime, we're happy to have you back. Hopefully, you'll get a unanimous vote, which sounds like you will, on the BET. So I appreciate you even wanting to come back to us.
Further comment or discussion? Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I've known Ed for a long time, and Ed always steps up to the plate whenever he's needed, whether it be DTC Town Chair, whether it be Common Council, BET. We all know that in those three positions, he makes a tremendous amount of money. But also, he, whenever he is assigned to something, whenever he takes on a challenge, he puts his whole self into it and gives it his all, and, you know, that's certainly a quality that we can all admire. So if there are no further comments or discussion, I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. McMur is abstaining? Congratulations. Would you like to say anything? Okay. Yeah, the challenge is there, believe me. Next item on the agenda is just Mayor's remarks, as you probably saw during the, well, it's reported in the hour that the East Norwalk Train Station will be closed for repairs, et cetera, from eleven March till thirty, March thirty-first. It's in construction due to the Walk Bridge. At that time, they're also closing the road underneath the railroad bridge over there for that period of time. It'll be closed for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for three weeks. It's going to be a challenge going through that area, where they have the detour marked very well. They'll have police officers there to assist. But this is going to expedite the laying of the utilities and for EverSource, I'm sorry, for Frontier underground, and that'll expedite the process, rather than having to close it periodically for six to eight weeks. This will be done in three weeks. This week, also, coming on Sunday, we will be celebrating at the Norwalk Public Library on Belden Avenue, the Chinese New Year, which began on February tenth. This is the Year of the Dragon. The dragon represents good luck, intelligence, charisma, optimism, and strength, and is predicted to bring improvement and abundance. I wonder if it's going to help our budgets. At this festive and educational event, participants will get the chance to explore the customs of the Chinese New Year, enjoy dance performances by Lee Garden Dance Company and the Connecticut Chinese Education Association Dance Group and more. Now, on Washington Street, the city is asking for entrepreneurs to step up and put in business proposals for a chance to win free commercial space on Washington Street for a period of time. The contest aims to support small businesses, and submissions are due by Friday, March twenty-ninth. You can learn more about this on our website. And last but not least, on March twenty-third, the city is hosting an Easter egg hunt at the Mill Hill Historic Park from eleven thirty AM to one PM. So come and enjoy the festivities. That's all I have. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to move down to five, six A. Who's reading the consent calendar?
Me.
But I have to, Stan McMur is going to read the consent calendar for this evening.
So excited. Six A, Corporation Council. Number one, Authorization to Discussion: Settlement Summit Handling System V, City of Norwalk Executive Session. Seven A, Finance and Claims. Number one, Accept and Approve the Report of the Claims Committee, dated February two thousand and twenty-four. Number two, For Informational Purposes Only Narrative on Tax Collections, dated February two thousand and twenty-four. Number three, For Informational Purposes Only Monthly Tax Collector's Reports, dated January two thousand and twenty-four. Number four, Authorize the Purchasing Agent to Issue a Purchase Order to GovConnection, Inc., in an Amount Not to Exceed one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents for the purchase of seven hundred and ninety Microsoft Office three hundred and sixty-five annual licenses. GovConnection, Inc., is on the State of Connecticut Contract, number NCPA zero one dash one four four, account number noted. Seven B, Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs Committee. Number one, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter Into a Contract with Whittingham Cancer Center of Norwalk for the Use of Calve Pastor Beach and Immediate Surrounding Grounds for their Whittingham Cancer Center Walk, event to be held on Saturday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, from nine AM to three PM. Setup time Friday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from twelve PM to two PM, with teardown on Saturday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. That needs to be corrected, by three thirty PM, approximately seven hundred and fifty people. Number two, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter Into a Contract with Triangle Community for the Use of Veterans Memorial Park and Immediate Surrounding Grounds for their Pride in the Park event, to be held on Saturday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, from twelve PM to eight PM. Setup time Friday, June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, from eight AM to twelve PM, with teardown on Saturday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, by nine PM. Rain date Sunday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, approximately eight thousand people. Number three, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter Into a Contract with Norwalk Seaport Association for the Use of Veterans Memorial Park and Immediate Surrounding Grounds for their Norwalk Seaport Oyster Festival Event to be held from Friday, September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, to Sunday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Setup time from Friday, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eight forty-five AM, with teardown by Monday, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at one thirty PM, approximately forty thousand people. Number four, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter Into a Contract with NMMA for the Key Use of Calve Pastor Beach Taylor Farm and Immediate Surrounding Grounds for their Norwalk Boat Show Event to be held from Thursday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, to Sunday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, from seven AM to ten PM every day. Setup time by Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with teardown on Sunday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, by ten PM, approximately ten thousand people. Number five, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter Into a Contract with Stepping Stones Museum for the Use of Matthews Park and Immediate Surrounding Grounds for their Stepping Stones Museum Kaleidoscope Circus Fall Event to be held from Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, to Sunday, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, from ten AM to five thirty PM. Setup time from Friday, March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, through Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, with teardown from Monday, March thirty-first, through Wednesday, April second, two thousand and twenty-five, approximately four hundred people. Number six, Authorize the Purchasing Agent to Issue a Purchase Order to Intelligent Marking USA, Inc., DBA Turf Tank in the Amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for the purchase of an autonomous Field Marking Robot Project, number four, three, three, one, from account number noted. Number seven, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter Into a Contract with ID Sign Systems, Inc., for Project Number four, three, two, five, Recreation and Park Signage Project, in an Amount Not to Exceed sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, from account number noted. Seven B, Authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to Issue Change Order to ID Sign Systems, Inc., for Project Number four, three, two, five, Recreation and Park Signage Project, in an Amount Not to Exceed nine thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, from account number noted. Eight A, Authorize the Purchasing Agent to Issue a Purchase Order to Turf Products of the Source Well Purchasing Contract Number Noted, for the Solo Source Purchase of Three Toro Workman GTX Electric Utility Cars in an Amount Not to Exceed fifty-two thousand, forty-two dollars and eighty cents. Account number noted. Eight B, Authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to Issue a Change Order to Turf Products Off the Source Well Purchasing Contract Number Noted for the Solo Source Purchase of the Three Toro Workman GTX Electric Utility Cars in an Amount Not to Exceed five thousand, two hundred dollars, from account number noted. Number nine, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter Into a Five-Year Operating License Agreement with a Five-Year Renewal Option with Riverbrook Regional Young Men's Christian Association, Inc., YMCA, to operate recreation programs with approximately two thousand square feet of designated space at the proposed Norwalk Community Recreation Center at ninety-eight South Main Street. Terms of the agreement shall be as recommended by the Land Use and Building Management Committee. Seven C, Ordinance Committee. Number one, Approve Revisions to Section nine dash three, Chapter nine, Article one, Section three, Procedure for Sale of City Property. Seven D, Public Safety and General Government. Number one, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter a Lease Agreement with the Owners of One Thirty-two Water Street LLC for five years for seventy-one thousand, two hundred dollars per year, with three percent increases in the subsequent years of the Norwalk, or the Norwalk Police Marine Division Base, its public safety vessel and storage space, account number noted. Number two, Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to increase the records fees associated with the request and release of body and dashboard camera video recordings to thirty dollars per hour of video provided. Number three, authorize the Mayor Harry, authorize the mayor to execute a three-year agreement with Hartford Healthcare Medical Group for the four-two-six-four R Occupational Health Services. Number four, authorize the Chief Human Resources Officer and/or Designee to Issue Two One-Year Contract Extensions on the Hartford Healthcare Medical Contract. Number five, Technical Correction to the Non-Unit Personnel Benefits and Compensation Policy Ordinance Salary Schedule that was before the council on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. The incorrect version of the policy was attached at that time. We are resubmitting this policy to make a technical correction. And Madam President, that is the reading of the consent calendar.
Right. Thank you very much. For the consent calendar. All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to item seven A five. Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven A five, under the Finance and Claims Committee. I'd like to read the following resolution. Whereas section one dash two eight nine of the Norwalk Charter requires that a majority of the Common Council vote to establish a specific spending on local expenditures during the process of establishing the next fiscal year's operating budget. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Norwalk that the maximum limit on the total appropriation of the City of Norwalk for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-four, shall be no more than four hundred and forty million, six hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. This appropriation cap represents total expenditures of four hundred and sixty-seven million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars less estimated into governmental grants of twenty-six million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Be it further resolved that the result of this vote and resolution be forwarded by the Clerk of the City of Norwalk to the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move this item and move into discussion.
You have the floor.
Thank you. This particular item was reviewed last week during a special meeting of the Finance and Claims Committee. The requirement by charter is for the council to set the maximum amount for this operating spending for the ensuing fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. How do we arrive at this number? We have our Budget Director, Mr. Tom Ellis, to take us through a presentation that will cover the details related to how we derived at this current operating budget cap. this current operating budget cap. But also the impact of this particular cap as it relates to other variables such as how will it affect the various mill rates in the districts? And also How those mill rates will be impacted by our recent revaluation and the impact of the grand list. It's going to be a difficult year, but we're going to now move into discussion with Mr. Ellis presenting the information.
Good. Right here, hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. As Greg said, I'm Tom Ellis. I'm the Director of Management of Management and Budgets. Did this presentation on Thursday night at the Special Finance and Claims meeting? You have that in front of you. We did modify slightly a few formatting changes and one or two new slides. This is the calendar through the budget process. We basically kicked this process off in September. And Get the formal budgets out to the other departments by October. And then it works its way through the process. Right now we are right about here. We're setting the budget cap for the common council. I like to hear that there is one more public hearing that will be with the BET on March twentieth. And then it works through Works through a few more meetings and then the BET sets the final cap. Sets the final cap and tax levy on the first Monday of May, which this year happens to be basis. Here's where we are on the operating budget expenditures. Last week, we presented the approved The original recommended, the original recommended told four hundred and forty-two million dollars. That came up to a four and a half percent increase for both the city And public schools were an overall percentage increase of four and a half percent. We went back and scrubbed in some cases several times with all the divisions and departments. Looking for every opportunity to reduce spending where possible. So here's where we are now, the yellow highlighted column revised recommended. That totals four hundred and forty million, six hundred and eleven, nine ninety-six, which is what Greg just read regarding setting the cap. And that equates to four percent for the city, four percent for the Board of Ed, four percent in total. Going down the line here, here the percentages, if you recall reading Or hearing, the mayor had originally issued guidance for no less, no more than a three percent increase by department. Many of the departments were able to do that, some were not. The biggest increases are ones that we cannot control. I bring to your attention pension plan, two point two million. Four percent. We have no control over that. We have to put pensions, pension funding in. And we do not want to be in a position where we have underfunded pensions like state has been struggling with for many years. Contingency, it's a million point eight. Hundred twenty-two percent. This is a set aside for labor contracts that are about to start. Sometime in two fiscal twenty-five, we will settle those labor contracts with all seven or eight unions. I can never remember which it is. And then we will have to pay retro wages. So this is a set aside to have a balance to cover those retro wages wherever they end up settling. Debt service, the very first one, two point two million, five and a half. That is a function of our capital spending. So that is up to five and a half percent this year, two million dollars. The other ones that are, you know, sort of stand out seventeen percent here for Chief of Staff. Not a tremendous amount of money, a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's because last year we had approved two hires for a half year. This year they're on board and they are here for the full year. So when you compare Full year salary to last year's half year salary, it skews the percentage higher. Equity inclusion, it's just training and education and some expenses to get that office up and running with supplies. I'm going to stop at each slide because there is a lot of data in this presentation. Does anybody have any questions about this part before we move forward? So everybody knows we went through our first full physical revaluation since two thousand thirteen. By statute, we have to do a Full revaluation every five years. By statute, we have to do a full physical ten years. What does physical mean? Those are the letters you got from the companies that were doing the appraisal. Those are the individuals that came to your door, wanted to look around your house. If you had done renovations, they asked to come inside. That is the full physical revaluation. So the city, as a result of that, the City of Norwalk's grand list went from fifteen billion last year To eighteen billion this year with the revaluation. The increase in the overall grand list is entirely due to the residential evaluations. Commercial grand list actually went down slightly. We call it flat, but it did actually go down slightly. So the skew between residential and commercial Skewed towards residential. Last year was sixty-six percent residential, thirty-four percent commercial. This year, seventy-one and a half percent residential. Twenty-eight and a half percent commercial. I know a lot of people talk about the apartments that have gone up lately. Those count as commercial and that actually helped. If not for those apartments. The differential between commercial and residential would have been even greater. The chart up top just shows the median home value by district. You can see that goes anywhere from thirty percent to sixty-one percent in the second district. So we all know what home values have done, started with the pandemic and it has just kept going. Questions on this one? Yes.
My question. What is the differential between the tax abatements that are still outstanding versus the In the commercial sector?
I don't have that. Mario, offhand, you know?
No, no.
I know you said a lot of them are coming Are kind of expiring soon. I was just wondering how much that will be Coming in once they do expire.
I'm sorry, could you speak louder? I can't hear.
I'm sorry, not at the lab, Tucker. I was just kind of wondering, I know that a lot of the Not a lot, but a lot of the tax abatements are expiring soon. You were saying in our last meeting and I was just wondering, like, when they do expire and they are paying the full Amount, how much that will come in?
Yeah, the tax abatements are in the enterprise zone where they're authorized. It's authorized by the state. We have an enterprise or Policy here. So it all depends on when they expire as different times.
So I'm just wondering, like, next year, how many will expire and will that pay into the, you know?
Just keep in mind with the enterprise zone typically what's done is it's a cascading effect. So it may be an abatement of like ninety percent year one and eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty, forty. It goes down over a seven-year period. The average is fifty percent over the seven-year period. So the mall, actually, we negotiated the land disposition agreement. One thing we did negotiate was for the The abatement to be a flat, an average of fifty percent of that rather than having this cascading effect. Because it would have a fairly significant effect on the city because it's such a big value. So I think Part of the answer is that As the properties that do have abatements get further into the abatement period, further into that seven-year period. The percentage of the abatement is reduced Each and every year. So it's
I do understand that. I was trying to figure out what percent Of their What they owe in taxes is abated so that next year, when if they're paying full, you know, the full amount, how what the differential is.
I think we'd have to get that from the tax assessor. We don't have that information right in front of us because when they start the tax abatement In the enterprise zones, as the Corporation Council said, it goes for seven years. And they start on different times. So whenever the abatement is authorized.
Right. So that will be an increase theoretically when
So the tax assessor would be able to provide that information.
So is that in our projections at this point?
And yours?
Yeah, are projected, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else on this one? Okay, this chart here is Presented to highlight the impact of the revaluation. So if you see the up at the top of the title there. This assumes a flat budget. In other words, if we did a copy paste from our fiscal twenty-four to this year, zero increase anywhere. And a zero draw from the rainy day fund. This is what would have happened to taxes. So you can see That the mill rate, the average mill rate goes down about fifteen to sixteen percent. But the change in the tax bill is up anywhere from fifteen percent to thirty-six percent, depending on the district. So this is supposed to highlight just how impactful the revaluation is to the average tax bill. So this top part here, the flat budget. That's the same chart that you just saw on the previous page. The one on the bottom here, this is the one that we arrived at last week, four percent Increase for the Board of Ed, four percent for the city, eight million dollar drawdown from the rainy day fund. Personal property at twenty-seven mills for all districts. And the motor vehicle rate going up two points to thirty-two point four six mills. So you can see all the way down here at the bottom. The increase against anywhere from sixteen percent to thirty-seven percent. Any questions on this one? Yeah, okay. All right, this slide.
Could you just explain your last Chart there?
Which one?
Variance in median tax bill, the very bottom one.
Oh, okay. So this is the difference. I'll do the first district. So zero percent for everything and no draw from the rainy day fund. The Tax bill for the first district would be seventeen seventy-four right here. And down here with the four percent and the eight million draw, it's eighteen. Eighteen hundred. So it's really not a huge difference. That's the difference between those two right there, the eighteen and the seventeen seventy-four. And same for all the districts.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
So this is, again, the blue box is the last chart on the previous page are four percent across the board, eight million dollar draw. One of the things we looked at, well, we actually looked at many things. We did Somewhere between fifteen and different, fifteen and twenty different scenarios, different mill rates. Try to come up Back for Rate increase to taxpayers. Our neighbors in Stanford recently just started doing a phase in. And what that is, is taking evaluation and staggering it over a period of time, whether it's two years or four years. So this first one is a four-year phase in, again, four percent across the board, eight million dollar draw. And you can see that the impact In the first year To the different districts is pretty dramatic. So for example, in the six taxing district, it went from You know, changing the tax bill from thirty-seven hundred right here To seventy-four hundred right here. And again, the reason for that tremendous impact Is because the three billion dollar increase in the grand list was all on the residential side. If commercial had gone up as much as residential had, there'd be much more parity. And the increases would not be as dramatic. So we looked at a number of different phases and scenarios. And it just doesn't help anybody, especially in year one.
Jim?
Tom. Jumping ahead to the second phase in, second year. That five thousand, let's call the six taxing just he's got about a fifty-nine hundred dollar Increase. That's over the previous year, right? That's in addition to the previous year. So we're talking about maybe thirteen thousand dollars over two years in that case. So the four-year phase in.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The first one, the first one's a four-year phase in. The first year would be seven thousand dollars, right?
Correct.
What, you have any idea what the second year would look like?
No, I don't.
Or in the two-year phase in, would the Would that fifty-nine hundred then go to? You know, what would be the impact of the phase, the rest of the phase in, I guess is what I'm saying.
I don't have that here with me, but I can look for it, Mario.
I give you nothing. Just to note, if you do a four-year phase in, it's a twenty Taking twenty-five percent of the increase each year, if that's helpful, even though the numbers aren't there. Conceptually, it's hitting the hundred percent of the increase and dividing it over four years.
It'd be much better off taking it in the first year because it's just going to continually go up geometrically year after year.
There would be an increase every year, an artificial increase, essentially an artificial. Yes, you'd be taking twenty-five percent each year.
And you're not, and you're not going to be adjusting. Well, you would adjust the grand list accordingly. Wouldn't you, do you not? When you have to, I mean, you've got new
Conceivably, as the mayor pointed out, you'd have a twenty-five percent artificial increase.
Yeah.
One thing you do get each year is an increase based on increasing your grand list for reconstruction. Even if the work's not finished, based on the status as of October one. Commercial, personal property, motor vehicles.
So we're better off taking it in the first year.
The business decision, but You can see the numbers. As Tom pointed out, there's this issue of the balance between increasing residential and residential. The parts of running the numbers of all of the choices.
Yeah.
Ms. Sayers?
Janice.
I'm sorry?
Mrs. Steve.
Oh.
Oh, he did. Okay. Mr. Ellis, good evening. Can you do me a favor and go back to slide six? I'm overlooking something. I just want to make sure I'm processing what you're giving me correctly.
Yeah.
Okay. So if we're looking at the first taxing district and we're going down to the bottom of the page. In yellow, it says fiscal year twenty-five recommended, recommended median tax bill, seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six. Fifty-four. Thank you for the, and then the approved is six thousand twenty-five. Is that the difference between four percent and four and a half percent? What is the difference?
No, no, that the Approved median tax bill is from last year. That's two thousand twenty-four. Yeah, the line right above it is our recommendation At the current moment. That's, yeah, and that's reflective of the four percent right now.
So that's reflected of the four percent.
Correct.
And then when you scurry on down to your bottom, the variance in dollar change, that's fifty-five dollars is at the four percent.
Correct.
So if we're doing a half more, is my math correct? It'll be a hundred and ten? If we're at four point five percent?
Conceivably, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure the math was I have degrees, but it's not in math. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Ms. Nagelsky-Eichner?
Sorry, I have two questions. I first want to go back to that because that math does not make sense.
Back to six?
Back to six.
I thought it was me.
No, so I just wanted to double check. So the variance, as I am understanding this slide, that fifty-five dollars Is the difference between doing a zero percent increase and doing a four percent increase, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So it's that seventeen seventy-four right here versus the eighteen twenty-nine.
Right. So if we were to go up to four point five percent, that variance is not going to go up to a hundred and ten. It would go up to sixty or You know, it would be if a point five addition is not going to double that number.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Sixty-five and a quarter. Thank you, Mario.
So it's not the one tear. No, no, it would add about, because this is zero to four, right?
Fifty-five, two fifty-five divided by four.
Yeah.
And that's your multiplier.
So yeah, so it would take it up sixty-five. Thank you, Mario. Okay, thank you. I wanted to double check that. So then I have a question on your next slide.
Back to eight?
Yes, but if anyone else has questions on this.
Well, yeah.
Mr. Seed.
On that, this slide, I don't see an option. I don't know if you looked at it, if we did like a zero percent increase, eight million draw from the rainy day fund.
Well, that will be, wanted to highlight was just the revaluation. So we included none of our variables. Zero for the draw, zero, just we wanted it to be strictly the impact of the revaluation.
Okay.
And to be truthful, zero percent is a practical. We have at least three percent in labor contracts that have to be covered every year.
Further questions?
Mine's on the next slide.
Miss Dunn?
Mine's on the next slide too. Um, sorry.
Seven or eight?
The phase in, the four-year phase in.
Okay.
Is, is that With the idea that even though it's a fiscal year twenty-five, if we have a four-year With the idea that even though it's a fiscal year twenty-five, if we have a four-year phase in. You're assuming that the budget would stay flat for four years? Those numbers to be the same?
No, um, we would, as I was just mentioning with, uh, uh, with Jalen, the. At, at minimum, it would be the cost of the labor contracts, right? So three percent and then you have. New hires and inflation and new initiatives and so on and so forth, so.
So it'll be compounding if you do that.
So we didn't actually do, you know, carry over the budget for a three to four-year forecast. When, when we saw these results from the phase in, for the first year, it was enough to tell us that wasn't worth pursuing.
It's the Juski Eichner.
Um, and I apologize, I do not understand this slide, I gotta be very honest. So, um. I, I just, I genuinely, conceptually, logically, I'm not understanding why a four-year phase in would result in double. The increases in the first year. So the four-year phase in, we're getting a thirty-six hundred dollar increase in District Six. In the four-year phase in, we're getting a seventy-three hundred dollars. So why would phasing in actually make it higher? I think I'm just missing something here.
Um, Paul Gorman, you wanna articulate this one? Cause our, our tax assessor is on the line.
Okay.
He, he can do a little bit better.
Uh, my pleasure. I'll, I'll, I'll try to live up to Tom's, uh, billing that I just got. Ba- basically what it comes down to, when you're looking at a four-year phase and a two-year phase, and when everything, as Tom had mentioned earlier. Is so, um, sided towards the residential increase. In a four-year phase, and as Mario was explaining, it's, you're grabbing twenty-five percent per year. But in that first year, you're grabbing twenty-five percent of the, um, increase to the grand list. But you're still grabbing the full increase to the budget. So you're having to pay for all that extra budget. With only a twenty-five percent to increase to the, 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 uh, assessed values. In a two-year phase in, you're grabbing fifty percent of it, and that's why there's the difference. And to Tom's point about why it just doesn't make sense is because. When Stanford did it, Stanford had a much more balanced revow that their, their commercial kept up more with. Their residential, but some of that has to do with when they revow, they revow last year. And so the increases weren't as stark on the residential side, they had one year less of. Uh, prices rising and the commercial didn't lose as much. I mean, it's just a function of timing. But it really is just a simple math of your, your, you have the whole pie of the budget. And the budget increases, and what are you applying to it? So in the case of. Not doing a phase in, you have the entire increase to spread it out over. In a phase in, you only have percentages of that increase to spread the budget increases out over. I hope that explains it.
I could be helpful, just to add one thing, uh, it's a simple math, there's nothing simple about trying to figure out the phase, when you're running the numbers in the phase in because. In some ways, it's counterintuitive, um, if you're phasing it in, so it should be less of an increase. One thing is, we were all grappling with this, we had a lot of meetings with the mayor and. Tom and Tom and Paul, and just a lot of us going over this stuff and trying to figure it out.
Right.
Um, and get, we're in all these meetings, um. And one thing to keep in mind is that if you're a four, just giving you an example, you have a four-year phase in, uh, the mill rate goes down each year. So that's just one thing to keep in mind, uh, so, so you're actually, your mill rate goes down, even though your budget goes up. Because as, as, uh, as, as Mr. Charles stated, you're gonna have increases in your budget, budget every year, if not just for, for contracts. Um, so why would your mill rate go down? Well, your mill rate goes down because each and every year, you're getting an artificial bump of twenty-five percent of. Not the entire grand list, but twenty-five percent of that portion of the grand list that had an increase from the base revaluation year. So if you look at a, a chart of a four-year, uh, phase in, and we did, one thing that's a constant is, no matter how you do the math. You know, within reason, you're always gonna have your mill rate go down each and every year over the four years. So that's why. It, it get, um, you have a, a more dramatic change with the, with the, um, with the phase in, in year one for the residential properties.
Okay, thank you.
That's one, one reason, that one factor that plays into it. Mister Goldstein?
Just to put a cap on this, I just think it's worth asking more generally. Cause I think one of the things that Tom, I think you and Paul both said was that. Were the facts on the ground different, i.e. the disparity between the commercial and the residential real, um. Uh, 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 revow so different, is that essentially, um, that essentially, I mean, out of whack is not the right way to put it, but definitely. What is it? I think it's seventy, I wrote it down, it was seventy, um, seventy-one and a half residential versus twenty-eight and a half commercial. Um, I would assume it is not best practice or standard practice. Um, for municipalities with the residential versus commercial disparity, or frankly, the other way around. Um, you know, so, uh, such a great disparity to, to. Engage in a phase, I would imagine that's not best practice, is that correct?
Well, based on what we saw in Stanford, uh, their, their commercial percentage is, is higher than ours, and that's why it worked for them.
Um, right, but the, the, I thought the, the explanation was essentially that Stanford wasn't a good comparison. Because their residential and commercial percentages were closer to even. Here, we're, we're at a very different set of facts, the residential is quite different from commercial. And so what I was wondering is in terms of, um, budgetary expertise, especially, you know, municipal budgetary expertise. Given the fundamental fact that the residential versus commercial is so different, I would imagine it's just generally not a good practice to engage in a phase in. Just by virtue of that alone.
Yeah, well, I, I, I can say that it's, it's pretty rare to do any kind of phase in, I think. Uh, when we were going through this, Mario was looking for other examples, and it was Hartford, and. There weren't a whole lot out there in the last ten years.
Yeah, we, we, we thoroughly researched, um, what communities have done, what communities have done phases in the last ten years, and surprisingly, there were not a lot. I can just tell you, cause I do represent a lot of other municipalities, and in particular, I do a lot of tax work, so I've got brought in in different municipalities over the last few years. Um, to look at the same, similar issue. A lot of municipalities I know looked into a potential phase in, um, in the last few years and decided not to do it. Um, and so, uh, some, some of those discussions were public and some of them, uh, not disclosed publicly, but. Um, what Norwalk has dealt with with regard to seeing an increase in the residential and a decrease in certain segments of commercial. Particularly office and retail is consistent with what you see throughout the state of Connecticut, particularly in Fairfield County. Um, a, a, in Norwalk, quite frankly, you know, one of the things people wanna live here, and so your residential did really well. Um, commercial, I don't think did worse than another place, it's probably better. Um, cause I think commercial value still hold pretty well in Norwalk, but the, the trend that you've seen here is similar everywhere in the state.
I guess the only thing I was just trying to underscore, and I agree with everything you just said, was just to say that, um, there's a very. Clear distinction to be made, so if people say, hey, why, you know, Stanford did a phased out, phase out, that, phase in. Why aren't we, there's a very clear reason why we wouldn't want to do that, and why that wouldn't be advantageous. To taxpayers, that's the sense I was getting, and I just wanted to.
Yeah, I just wouldn't say it's one thing, I would say there's a number of different factors that play into it, when you do the math and you run. All the different scenarios that we, um, so there's a lot, a number of factors that go into it.
Thanks, Paul, thank you.
Further questions right now, um, this.
Really basic questions for my own education, would tax dollars come in? Do they come into an interest-bearing money market account, or is it just a basic account?
Uh, well, we have a, a revenue line item for, for property taxes, um, and. That counts as cash on hand, and we actively manage our cash on hand. Uh, both in our capital fund account as well as the general fund. Um. We spread the money around through a whole number, uh, a number of different banks and institutions, uh, most of them local. And, uh, yeah, the, the Controller's Office actively manages that.
So is that, are they interest-bearing accounts?
Yeah, yeah, we make somewhere in the neighborhood of two to two point five million a year in interest.
Okay, so but if we take, if we get money later, and we're, and we're looking at interest rates going down, there's talk of. Uh, you know, interest rates going down federally, then the money that we cut, we take in is actually losing. A little bit, not much, I mean, but still.
So, you, before inflation took off, we were making probably a million and a half dollars a year on, on our. Yeah, on our, on our cash on hand.
Understand that.
Yeah.
Basically, thank you.
That, that is actively managed both by the controllers and the professionals in local banking institutions.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any further questions at this moment? Um, would you, could you?
All right, in conclusion, um. Significant overall increase to median tax bills, uh, you know, we've been talking about this, uh, through the whole presentation, it's the revaluation and the, and the skew between. Residential and, and commercial, and as we were just, uh, speaking extensively about the revaluations, uh. For several of the fifteen to twenty, uh, variable models that we ran. And the impact would have been larger, we just saw that on the, on the previous slide. And our recommendation is the best-case scenario with, with many variables contributing to this. Um, so our latest greatest is that four point, four point oh percent for both the city and Board of Ed and an eight million dollar drawdown.
Okay, so, questions and comments? Mister McMur.
Thank you, Mayor, um, so I would like to see a scenario where we run the numbers for a four and a half and a five percent increase. I wanna see what that does to the taxes. Please, and thank you.
Oh, uh, we didn't do that. Page, page seven.
Okay, thank you, I thought, I had requested it, and I was like, I know.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, so.
I thought, I thought we saw it, but we were flapping around a lot, and then we didn't go through it, that would be great.
Yeah, so.
On this side a little bit.
The, uh, the, the blue boxes are four percent recommendation with the eight million draw, and then you've got four and a half, and then five percent. And you can see that really the, you know, the tax bills do not go up that, uh, that much in between. So it goes, it would go from twenty-two or twenty-one nine seventy-five to twenty-two one nineteen and twenty-two two sixty-three. So, there you have it.
Thanks, Tom, I appreciate that.
Further comment or discussion? Mister Juski Eichner?
I do not have any questions for Tom, I have comments, so I think if other people have questions, I defer.
Oh, no, you. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mister Mayor, so, thank you, Tom, I really wanna, um, thank you, and I wanna thank everyone in the department, I know this has been. An enormous amount of work already.
I don't know why Ed is looking forward to this, but.
Actually, it's just starting, so.
Yes, as I said, it's been a tremendous amount of work already, I can't even, I know there's a tremendous amount more to come, um. And I think that. Uh, and obviously, I mean, this is a reality, right, this is a reality that is not particularly Norwalk, it is driven by factors entirely outside our control. Um, it, uh, in fact, we have done, I think, our, you know, made efforts to mitigate some of this disaster that we all saw coming. In the sense of trying to increase housing, trying to increase housing stock, um, and we can only do so much locally, um. But I think this slide here, you know, and, and Miss McMur's question, um, is really a slide I, I wanna focus on a little bit. Um, I, it is very admirable and absolutely correct that we need to spend only what we need to spend. And I think that that is, you know, I really appreciate the incredible efforts being done to pare back the budget, to think about what is necessary. At the same time, I really hope that these conversations are also driven by the question of where we can be more efficient. And sometimes that means spending a little bit more in order to get a little bit more. Um, you know, an area that I think you'll hear from some other folks on, you know, but technology is one that has come up repeatedly. I think Ms. Ayers has been on this subject for quite some time, um, I've experienced it both as a council member and as a user of city services. There are a number of places where, um, we have staff members expending energy, doing tasks that are below their skillset. Because we have not invested in the technology to streamline and simplify and allow them to. Or even quite frankly, in some instances, we even have the software, we just don't have the tech personnel to help them do that. To use it, to get it installed, to optimize the process and then be able to go forward. So they're actually using their skillset in their best areas as opposed to, you know, keeping everything going. And I, I've, I've heard a lot of compliments about the staff, it's totally accurate, we are getting it done, right? With a, you know, with, at a four percent level, we are getting it done, we're delivering, but are we optimizing? And I think that, so my question really is to say, as you're pushing on the departments for, to cut and, you know, to really streamline. Also asking a question, can we spend a little bit more here and actually then do a lot more? Um, Ms. Larchella mentioned a grant writer, that's something else that a number of members of this council have spoken about for years. A grant writer would substantially increase our revenue opportunities, would more than pay for themselves, it would make tons of sense from my perspective. To expend the money to add such a person to our budget, because they will bring in more than, than they cost. And I think we really need to look at opportunities like that and not just say to folks, hardline, how much can you pare back? But strategically, what's, what's most valuable here? What if we invest in this now? We won't have to pay more for, you know, in the future, um, you know, maintenance costs is another thing that comes to mind. The city, I think, has learned hard lessons, um, in our school construction, you know. The mayor has led the charge on rebuilding our schools, why have we had to rebuild so many of our schools? Because we deferred maintenance for so long that they literally drained their roofs and crumbled. And I think, so, uh, this, I think this is the really fine line we need to walk on this budget is. Um, asking those hard questions, not just can you do without this? But how do we optimize and do the best we can for the city? And if it's a little bit spent here, for a little bit cut there, or a little bit spent here so that we're saving a lot more next year. Those are decisions that are worthwhile, and I know they're very hard to make, and they're very hard, I think, as the council. We don't have line and authority, we can't sit here and tell you which things, those things are, but at the same time, um, I think we really want to. I really want to urge you to think that way and think strategically, so that we're not just getting information back. That, well, we pared it as far as we could. I wanna hear, we pared things that aren't working or aren't necessary or outdated, or, you know, we've gone without and turns out we don't need. But we've decided that investing here, here, and here is going to make things work better, and we will be, we will be, um. You know, more able to afford things long-term for the city, and again, I think that really gets to this four versus four and a half percent. The budget impact on our citizens is not large, now, that doesn't mean we go willy-nilly, it doesn't mean we go crazy, right? But it does mean that if there's a little bit that we need to do. And so that's, I, you know, I could go on on that, but I think the point is clear, and I really appreciate the thought that's going into this, but I hope that message is also going out to the departments. Think strategically, give us strategic information about return on investment, tell us where, you know, the nineteen positions that got proposed that we, you know, said no to. Would one of them bring in more revenue than it costs? Would one of them mean that actually five people are free to do more of their job more efficiently? And so we're actually getting more bang for our buck, I think those are questions that also need to be asked.
Okay.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, those con, uh, conversations do happen quite frequently when we're talking with department heads. Uh, when they, if they ask for, uh, software, if they ask for personnel, we always ask, you know, what's the benefit? What is going to happen as a result of that? And oftentimes, you know, we just find ourselves in a habit of, well, there's a vacancy here, let's fill it. Uh, right now, what we're doing is saying, this vacancy may have existed for six months or a year. You've done without it for six months or a year, do we need to fill this, and if not, where else can that money go? So we do a lot of that, in, in the scrubbing process, we do a lot of that, uh, asking, and the, the department heads, I give them a tremendous amount of credit. Uh, they're all very passionate about their position, they wanna do the best job they possibly can, uh, they ask for what they, uh, need. They also ask for what they want, and, uh, and, and we work together to try to, like I said. Uh, optimize, uh, any new expenditures or any new personnel, so that we are going to be ending up in the long run, saving cash. Uh, what I said, when I, uh, uh, asked for the efficiency study. Efficiency doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna spend less. It means maybe you're gonna spend more, but what's the outcome? So, you can, uh, any further comments or questions? Uh, Mister Seed and then Mister Frayer.
Just had a comment, um, that I think that all of us on the council should be thinking about, is really the effect that this has on the people in all. Um, looking at these numbers, especially just with the revow, it's scary. Um, today, I looked at, um, rentals and, and houses on the market, and. It's scary to think, like, peers of mine, I thought back to the people that I know in high school. Um, I know more peers that used to live in Norwalk than actually still live here in Norwalk. Um, there's a lot of people who went to the schools when they were old and, and run down. And their kids aren't gonna be able to enjoy these new schools that are here in Norwalk, because they can't afford to live here. Um, and I think that's what we need to be thinking about with this budget, is the, the citizens, because a lot of people do wanna live here. But the people who have lived here in my lifetime for thirty-two, thirty-one years, they can't stay here. Um, you have seniors who wanna retire here, and they can't afford to retire here, they worked all of their life. And they can't afford because these taxes are increases so much, um, in District A, I'm talking about. Uh, like a hundred and sixty-six dollar increase a month, um, in taxes. Um, that's, that's scary, people on a fixed income, or people are not making a lot of money, um. It's just scary, and I think that we need to be thinking about that, um, a colleague, um, Councilman Wiggins, talking like. We're, we're, we're two. we're 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 two people who who might be kicked out because of the rising cost of living here in Norwalk. And it's really scary um to think about. And I think that we really need to think about the people who who are living here. There's a lot of people want to live here and Norwalk is one of the best places in the country, um, in the state to live. Um, but we should just make sure that the people who lived here and worked hard to live here could stay here in Norwalk. Um, and and that's that's just on the top of my mind and my heart, um, because I have a lot of peers and friends who who just can't afford to live here anymore. And this is scary uh with the revolve and the effect that it's going to have on the citizens of Norwalk.
Thank you, Mr. Seed. Mr. Frayer?
Yeah, I'd like to just follow up on on both those points that that were made. I think, first of all, the um, what the mayor had mentioned about scrubbing the numbers. You know, having been on the BET for five years, um, we go through every single one of those lines. And we ask the question, not how much can you cut, but how much do you need uh to 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 do your job? In some cases, people come and say, I need more, more, I need another head. Well, what are you going to do with that head? How much is that going to really save us? What kind of value added is that first? If you can make a good point out of that, if you can make that point to any one of the people in the BET, they'd be happy to to fight for you to get that, to get that additional person in. But we can't just say, I think we would have a grant writer without a detailed list of what that grant writer is going to do, whether it's a webmaster, whether it's an IT person, whatever. You know, I talked to somebody the other day about an IT person. He said, you would add some IT people? Don't IT people save us money? Don't you cut people when you have good IT people? But the second thing I think is what um Jalen brings up. I look at these numbers and I'm in the sixth taxi district and I fell off my chair when I saw it. Yeah, there are people in Rowayton that can probably take a deep breath and they can swallow that. Well, when I looked at the other districts, I was really scared. That is really devastating to people. What he said is, it really hurts me because this is a town that I remember my my daughter, when she uh, when the first bit of writing she ever did, she talked about, and you know, when she was writing her apology essay, talked about the diversity in in Norwalk. And that's why, that's why she wanted to go to school in Norwalk. The diversity was there. And she had friends all across uh different areas of the school of of the city. That's going to go away, okay? You you're going, we're going to lose that if we start adding or playing around with the budget, trying to put a little bit more in there. Well, it's only a little bit. It's only about twenty bucks here. It's only about fifty bucks there. And before that, you're talking real money. So, um, I think we have to be very, very, very extremely careful. We've got to now start to think about, this is a wake up call. We've got to start to really look at that efficiency study. Is right, doesn't mean necessarily let you save a lot of money, but it means that we should take a look at it and we should start to put some kind of a strategic uh program together. It's going to see how we can get the most out of the what we have today and and save us our our money there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wiggins and then Ms. Smith.
To echo um Jalen, you know, just thinking of, and Jim, just thinking about, you know, my community that I grew up in, you know, to be able to to be here and live here. You know, I tell people all the time, I love this city. But when I look at this budget to Jalen's point, it's like, I might be one of those people that get kicked out of the city. Because like, you know, taxes going up, you know, back then, right? Right? And have no desire to buy property in the city because of, you know, the property, but I don't think you get a good bang for your buck. So, you know, with saying all that, I'm just thinking, this was echoed before, how like, what's the trade off? What's the trade off when we raise the taxes? Are the schools getting better, right? The the percentages going up for the schools? Are the schools getting better? Um, I deal with a lot of students. And to me, you know, I I don't see the schools getting better, right? So if we're going to go to the people and we're going to propose this budget, um, what are we going to say to the people to say, all right, listen, this is why, we already know the reasons that, you know, you all explained. But it's like, how are their lives getting better? You know, how are my children's lives getting better? And that's, that's what's important to me, right? It's like, all right, if the budget's going up, but, you know, we getting more services or, you know, kind of to Nora's point, we getting a grant writer that's going to give us, you know, something out of it. Um, it makes sense. But I can't, you know, even though we we see the studies and it's one of the best cities to live in. But when it comes to, you know, people that's impacted in in, let's just call it what it is, minority communities, it's not, it's 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 not the best city because the resources is not hitting these community as I feel like it needs to. So, in 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 fact, what's happening is people are getting kicked out. I, to Jalen's point, I can't name more than twenty of my friends that still live in in Norwalk. And the people that do live in Norwalk, it has to be on some subs, you know, subsidized housing. And that's not right either, right? Like, how can we get people to really be able to live in Norwalk and enjoy Norwalk and build some stake and equity in a city that they helped build ultimately, right? So, um, it it's, I said this numerous times, it's scary. It's a tragic and I might be on the chopping block. So how, you know, and I'm I'm representing the city. I'm volunteering my time. Well, I can pay fifty, forty, sixty dollars. For my time to represent the city and represent my community, but I might be on the chopping. You know, and I think, you know, as a community, we have to hear, you know, voices like myself, Jalen and, you know, the people that we represent.
Ms. Smith?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, a few comments. Um, you know, th- this revolve, you know, we're all very blessed to live in such a great city that, uh, you know, our property values are so valuable. And um, but on the other side of that, um, this will financially be painful for every one of us sitting in this room. For all of our constituents, this is going to be very hard. And I I wanted also take a minute to uh to thank, um, to thank you, Mayor, Mario, Tom, uh Greg, um, and everyone who worked on this um so diligently. I have no doubt that you are thinking of the efficiencies that we need to to take, but while also, you know, thinking of the effect that it's going to have on our taxpayers. I do want to say that, you know, we we know, you know, a lot of people have been clamoring to see the operating budget line by line. Um, and I do appreciate that you were finally able to get that up on the website. It's very difficult for me to read, um, you know, three hundred and fifty pages. Um, and so I do look forward. I am hoping that we will have that book. Is it possible we'll have it this week?
I'm working on it as fast as I can. Hopefully within the next week to ten days.
Okay, but you know, I I the one thing I do want to say is I don't feel comfortable voting without really having had the opportunity to go through that. And that, because that's where we see all the work that you've done, right? Um, and so, um, I feel like I need more opportunity to uh to look through that before I can make a decision. I actually, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, but yeah, um, since this is a tough one, toughest I have experienced, I believe.
Let's go, Ms. Ayers and then.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I want to encourage my colleagues to be courageous. We were elected not to act on impulse, nor were we elected to act in our own fear. We do have to be realistic and understand how things impact us. Um, and and listening to many of the comments that have uh went before me, these things that have been said, we have been saying them for years. It's not a news talk. We consistently said that people have been priced out of the city of Norwalk. Um, the reevaluation is a process of the city. It is going to happen. It happens periodically. Um, and and so we do our best with what we have. But I have to um amplify something that Nora says. When we look at services, we need to look at the quality of the service and not the quantity of the service. When you give people better quality of service, they are more um in tune to stay and invest because of the quality. We have a lot of things going on in our city that makes us unique, that sets us apart from our neighboring um cities, but that doesn't mean that everything is quality. So as we are um encouraging, I guess the word we are using is scrubbing. Um, the budget, I hope some of the conversation and I hope some of the information that is given back to this council is the quality and the impact of the services that we already have and how we can elevate them to make sure that the quality of the services that every constituent is getting is impactful. I have been on my soapbox and I guess it's about time for me to get back on my soapbox to really emphasize our IT department. It's not a position, it's not a webmaster or whatever other. It's it's a department that is so crucial to the functioning of the city. Unfortunately, um, many of us have experienced hatred through mail and through technology. We need cybersecurity, period. We need better cybersecurity than what we have. And the only way you can get it, you got to pay for it. So maybe we need to evaluate, not necessarily spend more or less, but evaluate where our dollars are going to make sure that things that are happening are getting answered in a timely manner and a quality manner. I said last night, um, that there are certain things that we should have that are non-negotiable. My non-negotiable are youth. In that subgroup of youth are um children that are identified as a population and the safety of all residents in our town. Those things we should not argue about. We should not um banter or have anything negative. We should all be able to come to a common consensus that that's where we start. So I encourage my colleagues to let us find common consensus. We are very used through the budget season for this room to be filled with people and people to come to the podium. And we're here for hours and we're listening intensely. Please do not let the lack of public participation make you think that people are okay with what is going on. You have to get out of your seat and do your own due diligence. You have to speak to your constituents and you really have to evaluate how the the decisions we make impact lives. They're serious business people. And I encourage you to not act unfair, but be courageous because that's what you are elected to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Mr. Goldstein?
I I think it's always hard to follow Nicole there. I I I just want to, I do, I do agree, of course, with the notion that um we need to be um fiscally strategic and also fiscally responsible. I think the counterweight um to what Nicole says is it's not really a counterweight as much as it is sort of a joining principle, which is on the one hand, we want to make sure that we're spending in a way that benefits Norwalkers as much as possible, but also within our means to do so. I I think that one of the, you know, I I Councilman Frayer calls it a wake up call, but I think that sometimes I I would imagine a reevaluation is as much revealing as it is. Um, you know, of the sort of the current conditions and where we are now and, you know, national trends. It is not a reflection on how this, how this city has been spending money, you know, over the last five or ten years. It's more a reflection of the value of properties, the point that people want to live here. And frankly, it's, it removes the, it removes a veil from something that we've been sort of slowing down over the last couple of years by using federal dollars, in particular ARPA dollars, to help um provide tax relief actually to our residents. Um, I I don't have the actual figures in my head, Greg, I know them off the top of his head. But i- i- in the term of millions of dollars of federal money used for tax relief, of which is, and that's the um, American Rescue Plan, this was the COVID era money, um, that's no longer available. I mean, that that program, the money has been um allocated and there isn't a whole new set of ARPA funds coming in. So we are left with this new reality um that the price of real estate has gone up in large part due to things that, as Councilwoman Ayers says, things we know about. There's not enough housing in Norwalk. There's not enough affordable housing in Norwalk. And that doesn't doesn't just mean federally subsidized affordable housing, but also enough housing and enough housing in our housing stock where people can afford it. What Councilman Seed and Councilman Wiggins said is incredibly important. A lot of people in particular who who are up here or people who work in our public sector right now literally can't afford to live here despite the fact that they come here to work every day. Fewer than half of our police officers, I'm pretty sure, live in Norwalk. I'm pretty sure that's also true with um many of our civil servants. And and so it does, I think, present us with this challenge to not only make sure that we scrub the budget and make sure that our fiscal house is in order, but also look at this as a, as a marker and a challenge. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we have this humongous disparity now with seventy one and a half percent residential versus twenty and a half commercial. And I realize, and I think that what um Tom Ellis said earlier in one of his earlier slides is incredibly important. And in fact, actually, a lot of the apartments that have come in count as commercial property. The increase of responsible development of apartments in the city is actually going to end up reducing people's tax bills because it's going to even out the residential versus commercial disparity. And obviously, as a renter myself, I can tell you, yes, renters um do pay taxes as part of their rent. But it is going to help even out that disparity um if we make sure that we um do responsibly develop apartments. You know, um, you know, and other forms of developments, people can live here. And and one of the things I think is a project that's already beginning, but I want to highlight as something that should be a priority for us, is converting unused commercial space and repurposing it for other, you know, important priorities, housing being at the very top of that list. So, I look at this budget, of course, or this, you know, the proposed budget, not only as an, as a as a stark reality and that we do have to provide high quality services for our residents because frankly, that's what they deserve and that's what we were elected to help um, you know, facilitate as well. But also as a marker and a challenge and one that we're going to live up to because we have to.
Further comment? Ms. McMur?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I want to just thank everybody who's taken part in the budget process thus far. I know you are halfway through your journey. Mr. Ellis, thank you. Um, I know this can be soul crushing, as I have been quoted in saying in past years. Um, I would like to change scrubbing to tidy up. I just think it sounds nicer if we can like make that catch on. I'd love that. Um, I think that's an easy and free request. Um, we are a growing and diverse city and cities like ours need services. Um, whether it be to keep us safe or keep us engaged or to educate our future, all neighbors rely on some kind of service in our city, which has been mentioned. We are also a very diverse city, which we all celebrate. Um, we have elderly people on fixed incomes. We have young people putting down roots. We have youth who want, we want to thrive. We have high income. We have middle income. We have low income people. And we want to meet them all where they are and allow them to stay in Norwalk and thrive as long as they want. Um, everything has gone up in price, including housing. We have to pay more for materials, for energy, for resources and services that we didn't a few years ago. And that's not a Norwalk problem, that's a nationwide problem. Couple that with the fact that we had to go through our revaluation. This process is mandated and out of our hands, but affects us nonetheless, unfortunately is going to affect our citizens of the town negatively, including all of us. What we are faced with during this budget is ensuring that we keep taxes as low as possible, but we also continue to provide services for every citizen in the city. I have asked, as I have in the past, for different scenarios, which we were given tonight. Thank you again, Mr. Ellis. Um, and it is my opinion that we cannot continue to grow as a city and not grow our services along with that increase. We have several new initiatives coming down the pipeline in the next few years, including a South Norwalk School that we will need to staff, a new recreation center that we'll need to staff, to name a couple. We also have many new apartment buildings, which means more people. How can we keep them all safe without staffing our fire department accordingly? Switching to electric will also be a huge upfront cost, even if there's savings down the road. How do we handle the increase in traffic by foot, by bike and by vehicle if we can't keep up with the projects around our roads and sidewalks? I honestly don't know how I feel about this budget at this moment in time, but I know I feel very troubled looking ahead to the future. How do we balance the increase in taxes and the services needed to a growing city? I task us all with a very monumental job of looking at any efficiencies there are in the city and coming up with a strategy that incorporates the needs of our growing city. Can we combine departments um in I T or H R with N P S? Are there positions that will pay for themselves, such as the grant writer that others have mentioned or another blight officer? We need to go back to the efficiency study again and again until we strike the right balance. As my colleague Ms. Ayers said, there are basic services that we cannot waver on. That should not be debated, that shouldn't be pace, basic fundamental rights. We need to come up with a strategy that encompasses what our core values are. We also need to think about growth in the city and how we can keep up with it if we are to continue to go down this path of growth. That's it.
Further comments or discussion? Mrs. Jocelyn Egner.
Um, Mr. Mayor, just because, I mean, you know, obviously, the housing is the devastating part of this, right? I mean, as you know, Mr. Sead has said, as Mr. Wiggins has said, as others have said, I mean, the number one question here is the impact is going to be um on housing. I wonder if you could, if you have an update on the timeline for some of our affordable housing studies. I I think that this revaluation is going to put even more pressure on us to sort of have a plan we can offer our residents as to how we're thinking about meeting some of the housing challenges that this and so I just wondered if you had an update on.
Uh, I I don't, I can give you that information uh tomorrow when I contact Steve. Uh, Steve Kleppen would be uh on top of that and Jessica Bonnischek as well. I'll get that information. If you're listening, Steve or Jess, call in.
Mayor, Steve Kleppen is out of the office until Monday, but Jess might.
Okay.
Because she's going to be.
Any further comments or discussion? So then I shall call for a vote.
Uh, so there is a resolution, is that right? Um, by charter, the the council has until um March fifth, which would be next Tuesday, to um um vote on the operating budget cap so that we can uh move forward in the process and forward the operating budget cap to the Board of Investment Taxation so they can begin doing the line-by-line review and discussion with the departments during the month of March, which will culminate with the uh B E T holding a uh public hearing on March twentieth. Um, so I think in in the spirit of that, um, uh, several questions have been answered today. We received a lot of good information tonight. Um, but there might be uh a need for further discussion, dialogue, review of materials. Um, so I'm.
You are.
So then I, I, so, so.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you are deferring because I think we had our conversation, so, yes.
So I did.
We we are supposed to be deferring this, we are not.
So at this point, Mr. Mayor, we, I I've read the resolution. I would like to request that we table this item until uh the specific date of Tuesday, March fifth, whereby a special meeting would be called by the Council President um for us to bring this item back to the table for further discussion and a vote.
So I'm gonna quit, Mayor, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that a motion to table is not debatable. So we.
We're all in favor, but I think the way we did it was a little different than what we discussed um last evening, but yes. Um, because I did have a few comments that I wanted to say, but it's not debatable, so we can go ahead.
Uh, well, if you want to hold that off and.
Would you like, would you like to withdraw the motion?
Withdraw for a moment?
No, we've already made, so we can just go ahead.
All right. Motion to table is not debatable, uh, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries and we will bring this back to the council on March fifth. I I believe.
Yes, thank you to the council. So what I wanted to say, because I thought that we had came to agreement that I, as President, was going to make that motion, what I wanted to say to residents and to everyone around this table. Um, and I hope that residents see how committed we are um to trying to get this right. We are at a point where this is critical, crucial to how the city will look and feel moving forward as all of our council members have expressed um here. So I hope that residents know um that we do not enter into this lightly and we are taking extra time to review the information once we receive it. Because as everyone has said, this will determine what the city looks like decades, moving forward um for the next few decades. And so we we we're not going to get everything right, but there are some things that we need to take care of in order to continue to move this city forward. And I I I I echo what uh uh Ms. Nora Najelski-Eicher has, Egner has said, what um, um Nicole has said and everyone around this table, we need I T and we need a grants writer. And a grants writer with the position within itself brings in money for the city, that is the goal. And so if we can support a position like that, if it's not now, but sometime in the future, um, we really need to do those sorts of things. And as, as it was expressed and as we've all experienced, I T is an issue. Um, we need more security, whether it's physical in this building, it's I T, it's all of those things that we need to have done. So I'm I'm going to stop it there. I I appreciate this opportunity and I'm not sure if we've ever had this type of discussion open yet to this at this level. I don't know if you recall that, any discussion like this about the budget.
I think uh, I think everybody is asking the questions that need to be asked, making the statements that need to be made. And um all those things need to be taken into consideration. And I'm sure the members of the public who may be listening or who will be coming to the public hearing uh will appreciate all the hard work that has been done. So now I brings me to Ms. Shanahan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two ordinances that I'd like to bring to the council and um with your indulgence, I'd like to bring them out of order um from the agenda because we have a paid consultant who's helping us with the um reapportionment. In an effort to save money, I'd like to not have him online any longer than we need to.
Hourly pay?
Yes, so thank you very much. So the first one I'm going to um ask for, I think Mr. Mendick is with us. So we'd like to um bring him up to a position of panelist and he's going to help us go through this. But let me please first um read the um, the item. Approve new ordinance establishing an advisory committee for the reapportionment of common council voting districts. And just to um, I'd like to move that item and I'll move it back to Mr. Mendick. But um this is in response to the um changes that we made in the charter in this past election. And so at this point, um, we have not redrawn our common council districts anymore, well, since in the nineteen sixties, I'm pretty sure. So it's um well past due that we um look at this issue and I'd like to have Mr. Mendick um, who is our expert, show up if there, if you can bring him to the screen. Do you, does somebody see him?
You have to scroll to see him.
Oh, I have to scroll, okay.
You'll see him.
The man with the very big white beard.
There's my friend.
Jessica's listening too.
Uh, there he is, I see him, Steve. Great, so Steve, if you could um give us um a little bit of a summary of what we um of the ordinance that we drafted together with our committee and um how this sits, that would be really helpful.
Well, I think the the old uh ordinance was uh rather vague.
Oh, no, no, Mr. Busky, where's me, Steve Mendick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of the body. Um, it's nice to see everybody uh on on a rainy evening and uh as uh the chair pointed out, the ordinance is a result of the charter revision, modific- the modification, modification of the charter that requires a reapportionment to take place. It should have taken place three years ago. It should have taken place over the last sixty or seventy years. And um, and instead of tackling the issue in the last revision, as you recall, the last revision was a pretty substantial rewrite of the charter. Um, the the commission decided to uh require an ordinance be adopted by the common council to address the issue. And um I will point out some of the things that we can cannot do and that hopefully will inform the twenty twenty-five charter revision process uh to actually constitutionalize the provision. Uh, but what we tried to do here is we we tried to um lay out the standards. The standards are constitutional standards. Uh, you just can't go out and create districts um to accommodate your own political whims, your political interests, your own polit- your own personal desires as members of the council. Ultimately, it's the council that will be approving um the charter revision. I think that gets lost in some of the debate. Uh, but uh if you take a look at it um in nine dash twenty-six, it lays out the constitutional standards that apply uh to the charter, the um the reapportionment process. And what we did uh when I drafted this and proposed it to the committee, um, I was trying to, and I looked at all the, and I've drafted many of these around the state. Um, many of the older provisions in the charter that people cite often um have partisan leaders that make the appointments. Some of them make them on their own, some of them make them with the support of a majority of their legislative body. Uh, but the standard is you have a majority leader, minority leader, usually Democrats and Republicans. Um, New Haven, there are no Republicans and Hartford, there are no Republicans, but there's a Working Families Party. Um, and and what I tried to do, to the extent we could, was to try to propose a scheme that was not overtly partisan. And it's one of the reasons I recommended that the president of the body be the appointing authority and for the first advisory commen- committee, and remember, this is an advisory committee, they do not um create the final districts. You will create the final districts upon their recommendation if if all of this works as it should. And so the president gets to appoint the seven members, uh no more than three of whom shall be of a, of a, uh, the same political party. Um, the president should and is required to consult with the majority and minority leaders of the council. And ultimately, it's a majority vote of the council uh that creates the committee. One of the things that we lay out here is that in addition to the caucus leaders of the council, the president, in putting this group together, uh should consult with civic, political, community leaders in order to find members uh who um reflect the diversity of the residents as well as, and this is very important, the geographic representation required by the charter. One of the things we uh did in the charter revision this past year, uh aside from the other forms of diversity, race, gender and uh and uh is geography. Because in many cities, we find that boards and commissions are, there's maladmini- there's malrepresentation. Or you end up with people from one neighborhood to the exclusion of many others. And so the intent here was to have the president make this appointment. Once the committee is uh created, they will go into the field, um, and I won't get into all the details of this. They will be able to use data and resources. Uh, hopefully, there would be funds that would be provided for them uh to hire a consultant. There are consultants throughout the country that serve um uh at state level, local level, to deal with redistricting. Um, and I know that uh the Corporation Council's office has already begun to prepare an R F P to address this issue. That committee would be uh en- engaged in the process of um working with a consultant, meeting with members of the public, conducting public hearings uh to create a proposed map, proposed district map that would um be proposed to the, to the um, to the council. Uh, and again, the intent of this also, and members of the council were very um in- instructive and uh influential in making this change, was to try to keep as close to the district lines as we have in the present time so that we don't have a uh chaotic alterations or shift from where we are to where we need to be. But we need to do it within the constitutional standards that are required. Uh, when it goes to the co- uh the co- the common council, the common council has um to act within forty-five days of the receipt of the report. They themselves would conduct a public hearing on the recommendations, reviewing the boundaries. They have the ability to modify the report. Again, their modifications, like the commission, the the committee's recommendations, need to be done in accordance with the constitutional requirements that are laid out broadly in section nine dash twenty-six. And then a majority of the body, as defined by the charter, it's a majority of the members of the council present and voting, would approve, approve the new districts. And then the districts would go into effect. If the council is unable within that timeframe to create the districts, the mayor then gets to appoint a second advisory committee. Again, advisory committee, they don't make decisions. Uh, the way this was set up is that you need to adopt an ordinance. The only body that can adopt an ordinance is the council. Uh, and that that committee would be comprised of three people. Um, each member would be uh of a different political party affiliation or no party affiliation. Uh, so that no political party shall attain uh a uh majority of um the members of this group. So the um, so the the intent, obviously, was to shift it away from partisan appointments and to move it to kind of a broader sense of appointment. One of the things that you find as you go around the cities in Connecticut is very rarely are unaffiliated voters represented in these entities because people are appointing um political people to accommodate uh the two major parties uh from from city to city. That that group then has to uh make their recommendations and it goes back to the uh council for final action, uh which has to occur within one week of the filing with the uh town clerk. And it's again a majority vote standard. What's missing in this ordinance that we cannot put into the ordinance at this time, so this is going to really rely on the good faith of this council, because it will be this council that addresses the issue, is we don't have a failsafe in this provision. Uh, we're not able to do that because the standard for adoption was by ordinance. When the next commission um is formed, we'll see how this operates. That you, this um, this will be in the field, this will be operational, the new districts will be in place while the next charter revision commission is considering additional modifications of the charter, and this would be one of the items that could come before them. And at that time, if this system works and everybody likes it, it might be a very easy uh transition to just move it into the charter. Um, if there's uh problems getting the uh document through the char- uh the council, you you arrive at some kind of stalemate during this process, uh they might consider putting a failsafe provision in there. In a number of my charters, if the council cannot act, then the final action of the advisory committee becomes the um, the district system. Uh, and so it's a, it it would be a charter authority that would allow for the creation in the event the council was unable to create it. We couldn't do that in this ordinance uh because we uh stand, the the commission created a standard where the ordinance was the vehicle for creating the entity. Um, so that's it fairly broadly. I know that there are a number of questions that people have raised um about it, partisan level. But uh I wanted to explain a little bit of the thinking that went into the creation and the structure of the entity. So I have.
So much, Steve, that's so helpful. Um, one other thing I wanted to um to point out, I'm not sure if you said this at the outset. The committee that's originally appointed by the president um can only have three members of any of the different parties. So there can never be a majority rule.
There will be a majority, yeah.
So I wanted to um open it up to questions to the council, if anybody has any.
I'll answer a question. Mrs. Juleskeigner?
Super briefly, um, thank you, Lisa, thank you very much, Steve, thank you to the whole committee for this. We went back and forth quite a lot. I want to reemphasize the point that Lisa just, Steve made. Um, no, no party has more than three. Um, and to Steve's point, part of why we did that is because in Norwalk, our unaffiliated is our substantial portion of our registration base. And so this structure allows us to make sure that we have unaffiliated members. We have Republicans, we have Democrats, we have independents. We actually can get the full diversity of our city as opposed to a bipartisan model, which excludes actually a very large percentage of our city's um registered voters. Um, and I also just wanted to reemphasize the point that Steve also mentioned, but I didn't want it to get lost. Um, this ordinance specifically calls for the committee to keep historical lines to the extent that they are constitutional. It calls for us to keep the taxing districts within the um districts to the extent possible. So all of this is in time and is intended to allow only the small necessary changes to get us constitutionally aligned. There's, there's no intent here, and I think it's important for the legislative record. The intent here is really to make the smallest possible changes. Um, and they get rid of silly things like one street in a neighborhood not being in in the same district as the rest, you know, all those kinds of factors. But it really is intended to make small changes and merely. But it really is intended to make small changes and merely get us into constitutional alignment, so thank you.
Further comments or discussion? Ms. Dunn?
You know, it's got me made. Um, I understand and I respect what you're saying, but I wholeheartedly disagree, I think this is not the best thing for Norwalk. Um I think it leaves the door open for corruption, I. Having one person take total control over appointing people, whether in consulting. Consulting anybody else or not. Um, I don't think it's the best thing for Norwalk going forward, and I'm not going to um be in favor of it.
Further discussion, Ms. Smith?
I would just like to point out that this is common practice uh for setting um any type of commission or. Um you know, is that the council president does make these appointments uh in conjunction with. Majority leader, minority leader, uh discussing with the mayor's office, so this this has been common practice.
Uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Murray?
That's okay, ma'am. Um, I I just want to say that we, I did do, and and the count, our committee did a lot of research into practicing in other cities, it's been brought up. And we've heard in discussion um from our opposition that. Uh Stanford does it this way, or Stratford does it this way, we've seen letters from the public that say, uh I think they said Stanford, Bridgeport. Uh and I can't remember the other city, where the gold standard, well. We we know that's not true, also in discussion, we've also heard, well, there's so many problems in the way Stanford does it. We did a lot of research into our particular structure, we have a hybrid structure. Fifteen members seems like a good fit for the amount of districts we have, to go into Stanford where you have. Forty uh council members, there's no accountability, it's hard for the voter to cap, keep up with that. So we did a lot of looking into uh whatever was presented to us, we researched to see if that was viable here. Um and I think we did a great job of being open to those ideas. Uh we looked at organizations um like Common Cause, which was started by a Republican. And set out sort of the best practices for redistricting, and I feel that we incorporated. All of that information um and looked over it, no stone unturned. So I'm really proud of what we did, and uh I think we've come to something really fair and equitable for everyone.
Mr. Wiggins?
So there'll be. Is it can't be more than three per party?
Um. Unless they're all unaffiliated.
Unless they're all unaffiliated?
Uh, okay, go ahead, Mr. Wiggins.
So it can't be three or um. More than three, but it's appointed by the uh the 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 chair and the uh majority leader?
No, by the president, yes, by the president of council um in consultation with. Majority leader and the minority leader, and also civic leaders. Um specifically, they're charged to speak to civic leaders and other members of the community.
But councilman, again, I think that's a really good point, um because uh councilmember Dunn said, well, it's not fair for just one person to do the winning, and that's not exactly accurate. What happens is she does it in consultation with the rest of the council, uh and so. Uh and then it it goes to vote, so of all the councils, so you know, she puts, she puts forward. Uh the people we're going to be looking at, they can't be of all, a a majority of one party. And they have to be civic leaders and community members, so even if they are all unaffiliated. Uh, you know, that's, those are the interested parties that reflect the diversity that's in our language of our city. Um, uh, but they can't be, because they need to be of. A a mix, no majority, so i- it can't be just one person, yes, she's putting them forward, but this is a system that's. Multi-tiered and reliant on many people, uh and so I think that's why it's fair.
And it does come before council to be voted on, the committee itself.
Mr. Wiggins, any further questions, you still have the floor?
Yeah, just just a thought, so just last question. So she, uh she's the um minority leader, so would she be able to pick um people or suggest people?
Suggest people.
Yeah, and then it ultimately comes back to the council.
Ms. Smith?
I I I would also like to add that we have all been asked, right, to make recommendation, I have personally recommended to Republicans. So. Just wanted to open that up.
Ms. Dunn?
I I guess i- it's not really about me, and obviously I haven't been. Part of a political party, so it's not really for me the partisanship, but I I do find that. The people that are put forward are, you know, the insider baseball people that are acceptable to people, not the people that make waves or. Might ask hard questions that people aren't happy with. Um, for me, and again, I keep saying, it's not about the people here right now, because I do have a lot of trust for these people. But it's an ordinance that has been for a very long time, and I really. Feel that going forward, as difficult as it is to change an ordinance, and it would require somebody. Wanting to change something, and and when you're in a position of comfort, you don't necessarily want to change something. So my my thing is that how do we make sure that we have different perspectives come to the table with different opinions? That aren't, we aren't necessarily comfortable with, and and that's not necessarily me, so it's not really. About me, and that's why I'm uncomfortable with it, because there are people that don't think like me that I I think need to be heard.
Further questions or comment?
I just want to say, I I actually agree, I thought that that was a fair question, but I I do believe our process is the best we have.
I disagree, that's okay.
But I think it's a fair question, and it'd be brought up while we do our voting, for sure, to look at the pool of people.
Further comments or discussion?
So before you close out, Mayor, I I have to say, I think, um, you know, this is, this will be new to me, but we have received names, um. Potential candidates from folks, and and I would request that you send more. I know uh Ms. Ayers has sent uh some names, and Ms. Smith has, and and Nora has as well.
And Ms. McMur.
And Ms. McMur, yes, and so we have a list. I don't think we're looking at just seven people, we want a list of folks to to choose from, so that it. I get it, so for me, it's not about you specifically. No, I know. It's about an ordinance and how hard it is to change that going forward. And for me, honestly, it's about looking what's going on nationally, and I don't want to get into like Supreme Court stuff and all that kind of stuff, but. It's concerning me when people have the power to redistrict the way they want, and I know Mr. Bedneck says there's laws about it. But you pay attention to what's going on, especially down south, it's really scary to me, so that's where I'm coming from, I want to have fail safes in there. I understand.
Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Extinctions? So Ms. Dunn is opposed, Mr. Wiggins abstains, and the other uh thirteen in favor.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you very much, Mr. Bedneck, we appreciate your statement.
Ms. Shanahan, you're still, you're still up to date?
So our last um matter is to approve revisions to chapter fifty-eight A, which is blight prevention. And um the opportunity came to us that um the state allowed us to change the penalties for the blight. And so we could increase the penalties for um violations. So we decided that if we were going to look at the violation statute, we should, the violation. Section of the statute, that we ought to also look at the definitions. So we spent a lot of time with um Mr. Bruski, Ms. Vonacek, um Bill Ireland, and. Worked really through a new definition of the um blighted property, and then also how to make um, how to go forward on the property violations itself. And um if we have Steve here and Jess, I thought I'd turn it over to them to um have them go through. This discussion in a little bit more detail, there's Jess this year.
Ms. Vonacek?
And she's muted.
There she is.
Gosh, after all that prep time, I still couldn't get the mute button right. Um, good evening, everyone, so um we've been working with the ordinance committee uh over the last several months to be able to make. Updates to the blight ordinance, and um. Actually, not only did we do that to address some of the state statute changes that came in place, and I will mention that um. That Corporation Council was very involved in updating the state statute for blight, but also we were asked through um Senator Duff's office to help out as well, and so we were really grateful to be able to do that. Based on our experience here with Bill Ireland and and Stephen Bruski and their experiences. And so there were a number of changes that came through the state statute, and the primary one that actually drove a lot of the change was. Talking about the um fees and the fines that are associated to blight, and specifically daily fines, and so. Um what you'll see with the proposed blight ordinance that's in front of you today, there are really. A couple of major changes from the existing blight ordinance that we have here in the city of Norwalk. The first is that we worked really hard um to be able to define blight differently. And if you were to look at the original blight ordinance, you would see that it really is only a page and a half or a couple of pages, and so. Um, the team worked hard with Lisa and Tom to be able to define blight a little bit differently, looking at not only blight and teasing that out. But also looking at property maintenance and being able to include more specifics there. And that's really important, because it allows us the opportunity to be able to enforce differently and enforce in more of a. Progressive way that helps us define what blight is and what it's not. Um, before, when we had more of a vague definition of blight, we weren't able to necessarily um be. As progressive in the sense of having those parameters of what is in the ordinance and what's not. Um, the second is the addition of the word commercial, so uh the state statute actually didn't include the word commercial, it only included residential. And you'll see with the original blight ordinance that a lot of the language around. Blight definition focused specifically about around residential, and so now with the addition of commercial. Uh we have the ability to uh work with folks in different neighborhoods, addressing different businesses um and being able to focus on that specifically. The third is the fine definition. Originally, we were only um able to fine a hundred dollars a day. And the new state statute actually allows us a different uh fine schedule or a different ability to fine. Um, the first is a hundred and fifty dollars for an occupied property per day. The second is uh two hundred and fifty dollars per day for an a vacant property. Which is really important, because we actually see the majority of our blighted properties are owned by. Um banks or third-party companies where the home has gone into foreclosure. And the bank is sitting on the property, and it's actually vacant, which is why the yard is growing or the fence is falling down, it's just unkept. So it's a really big, um, that's a really big element for us. And then the third piece in there is um. Is having, if there's a, if there, the property is blighted three times in the year. Then we have the ability to fine a thousand dollars, so if it's a chronic. Person, it's a, if it's a chronic blight issue. And it has a blight violation, and that's corrected, and another blight violation corrected, if it has the third blight violation, we're able to fine a thousand dollars. In addition to the two hundred and fifty or the one hundred and fifty per day. So, you know, there's a big difference between what the existing ordinance looks like and what the proposed ordinance looks like. I will have to say that um, you know, we always have work to do, we've been ramping up with the neighborhood improvement team, we've been ramping up with. The enforcement and how complaints come in through City Hall. Um, we've been working on different approaches to be able to work with um community members to understand what problem properties are out there. Um, I think you know, as of a couple of months ago, um starting in September, we actually bring together all of the different departments that do. Permitting and licensing, and we run through all of those properties that have compliance issues across different. Departments, so that we can run through with the legal department on what. Progress is being made and what areas we have to be able to um talk with them on. And so we've been doing a number of different initiatives um in addition to the blight ordinance itself, but. You know, I think that we should be really proud of being able to to make change to the ordinance, and also the fact that the state statute. Reflects what we've seen here in Norwalk. Um, I know Brian Cindela's done a lot of research uh through the ordinance committee on what other communities are doing. How they're identifying um blight citations, blight violations, how they're documenting that. And we've been talking about a standard operating procedure in in order to be able to not only identify but track. Um, I have heard some comments on, you know, are we blighting um a little too extensively, is that actually a blight violation, or is it something? That um that maybe not, but I think that extended blight uh definition will really help in being able to have Steve Bruski do his work. Um, and so, you know, I'll leave it there and answer any questions that you may have, but um Lisa, if there's anything I've left out, please let me know.
Now, thank you so much, Jess, this has been a real um problem in our um districts, I think all of us have had um different complaints. From different um aspects of our um neighborhood, and so it's really important that we address this, and we um beef up. Our ability to address these concerns, so I'll open up the floor if there's um other questions.
Questions, comments?
So I have a comment, um and I shared it um. With at our caucus meeting, and and first I have to say kudos to to your committee and 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 to the city and to all the departments for getting this done, it's long overdue. And I'm hoping that the impact will be meaningful uh for communities. But my concern is the definition of. Light for commercial property as it pertains to contractor yards, and as you said. Each community or district has their own type of light. And South Norwalk unfortunately um has had the worst type of light. Because we have properties that have, that can have residential homes on them, be converted into a contractor yard. So you will have a home in a contractor yard. Um but the definition that I see in this ordinance pertains to boarded-up buildings. You might not have that condition at a contractor yard, because they don't have those types of structures. Um so I'm concerned about that, because I think as we move forward with this, rather than take a wait-and-see approach with what we're doing. Let's get this right and tackle this at every angle, so that when we do start this process. We we have a real process that attacks everything at the same time. Um, and so I I I talked with, um I shared that at the council, I actually had a conversation uh with Ms. Vonacek about it. Um, and so there were some concerns, and I know the law department has weighed in on it as well. Um, but I think there's more to do, but I think this is a great start, the fines hopefully will make some sort of impact as well. On um on the city, um but I, those are the current concerns that I have, and that I'd like to see that be addressed. Um as we move forward with this, and do this in a timely way.
Yep.
Um, but I am in support of it, but I do want to see those things happen.
And we have committed to work with legal department and also with Mr. Pleppen, who um is out of town this week, to talk about. The differences between uses of land and late, um, late lands, so.
And where those descriptors lie and who can enforce that.
Right, exactly, and tighten the, tighten up restrictions on that, and Mari, I don't know if you want to say anything about. That in specific, or maybe, other than what you said earlier, you know, in our.
Yeah, what I said earlier is that uh ten years ago, the city had no blight ordinance, the city had no zoning enforcement ordinance, and those are two um. There are two areas that the mayor thought were a priority for the city to to address, and within the first two few years of of him being mayor, me being the board council. We did get a pass both the blight ordinance and zoning enforcement ordinance, and I alluded to earlier today, and some of our emails was that. Um, the process isn't isn't perfect yet, but it's getting pretty close, and compared to where the city was. And where it, where, you know, all all the great things that have been done in in the areas of uh enforcement, both in blight and zoning enforcement, from my perspective, having seen it where we had nothing. To where we are now is is really impressive, and I commend those who want to keep pushing, you're pushing to make sure you get it right. Um, and I also just point out, aside from the uh enforcement part of it, there is um a lot of, there's. Opportunities to work with people, to give people an opportunity to work with the city. Where they have good cause, they're trying to remediate the blight, the the intent is not to raise money. The intent is to remediate the violation, and I'll just tell you that from my experience. Um, that is the way the city does administer, very, you know, I think compassionate with folks about. Um, working with people, and there is a a blight, uh hearing officer, the zoning enforcement hearing officer who. Hear appeals when people do uh have reason to uh contest the fines.
Great, thank you.
Further comments, questions, Mrs. Jules Geigner?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to thank you, Mario, for bringing up that point, it's something I did want to raise, there's actually a specific section in this ordinance. About our obligations to work with folks who are elderly, who are low-income, and I think that's an important thing, we just want to highlight, this is very much on the minds. Of everyone doing this ordinance, is that balanced again, how do we protect our city, how do we support people? Um, uh and I I also want to um, you know, agree with um councilmember Young. You know, I think there's a, as we are moving into doing commercial. Does, there is, there is a gap, when you read this, it is very clear that sort of we have in mind residential, the visual is a residential property, and I think it will be important to think about as we evolve. Because the commercial owners are going to need guidance as well, this is new for them. What are the standards, what is the expectation, so I'm I'm really grateful um uh councilmember Shanahan for the work on this um. Going forward, the other thing I do want to um just add again, that we've received public comment primarily right at the end of the process, so um.
So, um, uh, council, Corporation Council mentions the extension hearing officer. We did receive some feedback about that from the public comment at the end of our process. And I think I just want to acknowledge that is comment we received, something that I think we may revisit as well as we continue to revisit the ordinance. You know, does the council have a role in, um, appointing that individual or confirming that individual? Are there options, um, for expectations for how that, the hearing officer conducts business that needs to be incorporated in this ordinance? So I think these are all questions that people have brought up that we will continue to work on. I just want to acknowledge that.
We're always looking to recruit attorneys who want to volunteer their time as blight or zoning, uh, enforcement officers. Hearing officers, and quite often I'm asked to try to recruit folks. Um, so, you know, you brought up eligibility. If you know folks who are interested, please send them to me. Uh, we certainly are always looking for, uh, uh, attorneys who are willing to volunteer their time for the city in those positions.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions, motion carries unanimously. We need one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned at nine forty-one.
Thanks, everyone.